Everyone, we'll go ahead and start our special meeting. Today is November 1st, 2021. It is now six o'clock. We'll go ahead and get a roll call from the House.
Councilmember McQuaid?
Yeah.
Councilmember Nathan?
Here.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Here.
And Mayor Gary?
Here, thank you so much, Anne. Go ahead and see if there's any attendees with their hands up who want to speak on this item. Not, we'll go ahead and meet you on the other side. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, good evening. Today is November the first, two thousand and twenty-one at seven P. M. We're ready to start our regular meeting. We'll go ahead and call it to order, and next we'll go roll call.
Councilmember McQuaid. She's here. Councilmember Nathan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Here.
And Mayor Gary.
Here. Thank you, Ann. Let's go down to line number three, which is reporting on action taken in full session. We'll hear from my city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Gary. There's no reportable action.
Thank you. And now we're moving down to line number five, which is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. City Clerk's putting something up on the screen to share. I'd like to actually recognize our city clerk for taking the initiative to do this work. In front of you on the screen, you see a variety of different languages. All of these are special to Albany, to different groups of people in our community. And we are now endeavoring to utilize this language on some of our key materials, print materials and other materials that we send out to our community on important topics of the city of Albany. And the language basically is, as you see at the top here, which has sprung out of what we also include in our election materials to help engage with folks that are speaking different languages or would simply prefer a translation of the material into a language. So this is a starting point, certainly not an ending point. And just wanted to share this visual with the council and the community as we continue this initiative to ensure the city is as accessible and easy to figure out as possible. So again, thanks to our city clerk for taking that initiative on. Another visual, if you can, Ann. You may have seen this in our Friday E! News. Thanks to the initiative of Vice Mayor Jordan, actually, and the action of the council recently, street trees are now free, utilizing the funding as approved by the voters when they approved Measure DD. Please take advantage of this new initiative to get a free street tree. And you can go to our website and click through a few links and get the application. You can also get the application through city offices. If you remember, about a week or so ago, we had rain for almost a 24-hour period. It was incredible. We also had a little bit today. And I wanted to take a moment to recognize the incredible work of our Public Works Department during that storm. In addition to storm drain cleaning and responding to local flooding, they also coordinated with the police department to make sure that we could deploy signage and other safety initiatives in case of streetlights being out or other infrastructure. They responded to calls throughout the day, as well as had our city arborist on hand to respond to any issues that arose. So again, thank them for taking the time and energy to work through that amazing storm. And as we hope that storms aren't necessarily over, given our water needs, we do have both sandbags available, as well as mulch, for community members down at Oceanview Park. And if you need assistance in filling those sandbags, you can contact our Neighborhood Services Department at five one zero five two four nine one two two, and they will arrange a time to assist you with a pre-filled bag. The Albany Police Department was incredibly busy last night, and actually in a good way, in terms of their community engagement initiatives that they do throughout the year. As you know, last night was Halloween, and they were out and about handing out glow sticks to many children. I have a few in my house, as my children brought them home themselves. So again, I applaud the police department for taking the initiative to go out in the community and help ensure a safe and fun return to Halloween for all of our kids. Also, the county has released, County Public Health has released the ease of masking requirements for fully vaccinated people in limited outdoor settings. You can read much more about this and the details thereof, both either on the city's website or really the main host of the information is Alameda County Public Health, as we've all learned throughout the pandemic. This does impact City Hall to some degree. Masking is still required because as a employer, we follow also the Cal-OSHA rules, which we are monitoring closely. So at city facilities, masking is still required. Hopefully, all of you have also heard of the availability of those COVID-19 vaccine boosters. It's something that we are actively promoting and encouraging. And finally, just an update on electricity counts as they transition effective January 2022. So a couple of months away now, but we are going cleaner and greener. And this is through our East Bay Community Energy Program, but also through the action of our city council to transition to even more green energy. You will notice a small increase, generally about $5 more per month for Albany home, residential homes. So please take note of that come January. And to learn more about that program, you can visit e b c e dot org slash Albany. And that completes my report.
All right. Thank you so much, city manager. We'll go ahead, and it looks like we have one comment or question at the time, and it's one minute.
Yes, thank you. So my question for the manager's report is, why is the police department passing out, I mean, it's great passing out glow sticks. It's great. It's great controlling intersections with, you know, stop signs when the power's out. But I was wondering if there's different people to be doing that. You know, we're spending a lot of money on the police department. And passing out glow sticks is great, but what about all the drunk drivers last night? And what about, you know, why not setting up a DUI checkpoint on Sampaia or Solano or something? Really keeping the community safe, you know, is a great job in the rain. I mean, why isn't Public Works out there, some other department got intersections? Who's going to respond to emergencies, shootings? I mean, there were shootings last night. I mean, so that's it.
Thank you so much, Jeremiah, for your question or comment. I believe the city manager did allude to the fact that Public Works and the police department was working in tangent last night to work. I think that's a good idea, that the police department was out handing out glow sticks so it would prevent any injury to our children. So, city manager, did you want to add anything else to that?
Thank you, Mayor. I think you addressed it perfectly.
All right. Thank you so much. We'll go ahead and move to line item number six, public comment, please. At this time, this is a moment for everyone to speak who are attending our Zoom meetings. You have three minutes to speak about anything that is not on the agenda. And I'm ready when you are. Go ahead.
Yeah, good evening. Luckily, I attended early on for close section, and I do believe you guys did roll call then. But then all of a sudden, the video switched to public. I've been watching this whole time. And you guys just jumped right in the meeting at like agenda item number five or four. There was no roll call for the public at seven o'clock. I mean, it's I didn't see any here. I mean, I've been watching this this whole time. Instead of 6:59, 7 o'clock, I raised my hand. I was just wondering, you know, 7 o'clock, the public meeting starts, but the public wasn't able to see roll call or consent calendar. I think, I think consent calendar is next. So also, I guess I can continue what I was saying about the police department in the last thing is that the fact that, um, I was just saying that last year, I know the police department didn't hand out glow sticks for whatever reason, but we did this year. I mean, if people really want glow sticks for the community, can't they just pick them up at the police station, go trick-or-treating at the police station at the lobby? I mean, I mean, it's great to keep kids safe, passing out glow sticks to where it's a good PR thing. You know, I just think police could be better used somehow. I don't know. I mean, I think it's nice to pass out glow sticks for the kids. It's a fun thing. But there's a lot of DUIs last night. You know, how many, how many DUIs did the officers catch last night? You know, how many people were speeding, you know, and these officers are on foot? How many cars are running intersections and almost running over trick-or-treaters? You know? So, I mean, why can't the fire department pass out glow sticks? You know, and that way the police department's on reserve for, you know, crimes happening, you know, bag snatching. You know, how many bag snatchers did they catch last night? You know, people walking around snatching people's candy bags. You know, really making a difference out there is a real thing. I mean, passing out glow sticks is great PR, but it's not really what they're supposed to be used for. How many thousands of dollars did we spend last night to pass out glow sticks? Instead of fighting crime. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I believe that's all for public comment. All right, we'll go ahead and move down to line item number seven, which is a consent calendar. I will go around the room. Start with Councilmember Nathan. Councilmember McQuaid.
Nothing.
Councilmember Tiedemann. Vice Mayor Jordan.
No, thank you.
I get a motion.
There is public comment, I see.
I didn't see that. They must have snuck in there on the last minute. Go ahead and give a public comment. One minute, please.
I'd like to pull 7-1 through 7-6, please, because I tried to download all the attachments, and I can't find any real data on the ratifying these payrolls and where the money is going and really what's going on on ratifying these payrolls.
Okay, so do you have a question about, we'll start with 7-1. Do you have a question about that? Is that where you're going?
Yes. I was just wondering if there was something that public can download
Okay.
to where we could see all these numbers, $300,000 and $400,000 going towards taxes and bills and, and, you know, where's this money going? And I'm trying to open up my Google so I could relook at this agenda right here. Because I know you're going to ask me what on 7-3, 7-4, 7-5. Okay, so and then on 7-2. Okay, the minutes. I couldn't find the minutes for 7-1. Oh. Okay, all of a sudden, there's these download PDFs, view item details. This wasn't available earlier when I was looking at the online things. Okay, so my questions are, since I could download them, that's great, but I do have a question on 7-4.
Okay.
United Against Hate on what? I mean, hate against hate on everything or? What does it mean, United Against Hate Week?
What's your, okay, so 7-4, you pulled a 7-4, and anyone else, any other item?
Okay, so I'm pulling 7-4, and then also 7-5 and 7-6, because I was wondering, on 7-5, is someone going to be available to take this position, since this person resigned?
Okay.
And then 7-6, emergency standing officers, stand-by officers, was who, who are these people going to be?
Okay, thank you so much. So we'll answer those. We'll go to the next person. Julie, go ahead, please.
I had a question about 7-6 also. I'm just curious why those particular, how that came, there are other commissions or committees. I'm just wondering why it happened that it was going to be those particular three? Why not, for example, somebody from SEJC on there, or somebody from CMAC, or somebody? I don't know. I was just curious, who decided it was these three? Maybe I missed that meeting, and I apologize if I did. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the council. We'll start with 7-4. Councilmember McQuaid, if you can briefly just speak to that proclamation. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. United Against Hate Week has been occurring in the, well, it started in the immediate Bay Area, close to us in Berkeley. And Berkeley, all Oakland, we're the first people doing this, standing up against hate, any sort of hate, any bigotry against people that are different from you. And I don't mean you and any individual, but just in being more inclusive. We started back in, I think, 2016. It's now a national movement, and there's a one week during the year that we try to have different events during that particular week. We'll be putting out information about what we'll be doing, but I believe it'll be a book sharing kind of led by our high school students in Diversified Narrative. We're also hoping to have an author come, probably confirmed now, hopefully tomorrow. Does that sort of, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McQuaid. So line number 7-5, city manager, did you want to, or Councilmember Nathan, I mean, it's just since, simply this, we were letting the public know that this person was on, and that option is open. Did you want to add to that, Councilmember Nathan?
The position is posted, and people are encouraged to check it out and apply if they have an interest.
Thank you so much. And then 7-6, this resolution was brought by Vice Mayor in our last meeting in October. You want to go ahead and speak to those questions?
Yeah, thank you, and thank you to the member of the community, the attendee that asked after this. The reasoning was, was laid out in the report I prepared for council that was, I believe, on its prior agenda and is an attachment to this agenda. But I'll reiterate what I wrote there and what the council agreed to in concept at that time. So the Planning and Zoning Commissioner, who was nominated by each council member, was proposed to be their first alternate. The reason for that, well, there's a couple of reasons for that. One is that that commissioner is approved by the entire council. That is unique among all the advisory bodies. And while some of the other advisory bodies do have an appointee or two that is approved by the council as a whole, they're not specific to a particular council member in terms of nomination. Also, the Planning and Zoning Commission is a quasi judicial body, so it is used to making decisions that are of a legally binding nature, which to my knowledge is the only commission that has that authority in its practice. Also, the Planning and Zoning Commission is quite familiar with the layout of the city. Obviously, not all emergencies that could require an alternate if the council member is not available would involve physical damage to the city, but many of those types of emergencies do. And so I judged it was useful to have an advisory body member who's familiar with the physical configuration of the city. I suggest the Transportation Commissioner as the next alternate, because they regularly make decisions on matters of safety and are also familiar with the physical layout of the city. And then Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Commissioner, because they make by new decisions on physical aspects of the city as well. So that that was the logic. Was the right logic? I don't know. That's what I came up with. We can take from there.
Thank you very much. All right, with that said, scan the room again to make sure no other questions. I don't know if that's just Jeremiah's hand up from, for not going down. Is that correct, Ann?
He raised it again, but we, he already spoke.
Okay, thanks. All right. I'll go ahead and get a motion.
I will move the consent calendar.
Second. Okay, can I get a roll call?
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McQuaid?
Yes.
Councilmember Nathan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you so much. Now we're down to line number eight, which is review of the advisory by work plan for SEJC. I'll turn it over to Seth.
Good evening, council. Tonight, this item is the work plan presentation from Social Economic Justice Commission. The commission first presented their work plan in July and was directed by council to make modification and reduce the number of work planned items. Staff's recommendation is for the council to review the revised work plan tonight, provide any comments or direction on the work plan, and approve the work plan. And if you give me a minute, I will promote up the SEJC Chair, KZ, to present the work plan.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Hi, buenas noches. My name is KZ Sapata. I am the new chair. I was elected, I guess, or appointed by the people in the SEJC to take over for Chair Dosti. So I, just to introduce myself, I was born and raised in Albany. I moved back here about six years ago. I'm a teacher at Berkeley High School, and I was appointed to the SEJC by Mayor Gary. And I just wanted to, yes, as Ann said, a reminder, in July, we presented, I think, a way more elaborate work plan than you're going to see tonight. And, you know, I think the reason for that is because there is so much to consider when you're looking at social and economic justice. And so the work, the reason why we're in November and still working on and working to get past a work plan is that, number one, you have some very passionate members of our committee. And number two, there are so many issues to consider, you know, and yet we're, we're, we are what we are. We're not a city council. We're not, we're nothing more than, you know, a commission. So I wanted to present and talk a little bit about the, the work that we've done to present to you tonight, the plan. I just wanted to kind of, for a moment, revisit, revisit the charge of the SEJC, because it's just so interesting. I remember when I first got on the council, I kept reading and rereading it, and it made, it made a lot of sense to me at the time. I was, you know, it's to research, analyze, discuss, and evaluate data and opinions related to social and environmental issues affecting the welfare of the residents of Albany as inhabitants of a local and global community, right? And then to make recommendations to you all and support you all in the work you do in the city of Albany. And so what, what really strikes me now, this word environmental, is so important because this is really about the community that we want to build, that we want to foster and create in the city of Albany, and that is deeply, deeply related to social justice and economic justice, and frankly, racial justice. So what environment are we raising our children in? What environment are we, are we building for both ourselves as well as our future? So, so now it makes a lot of sense to me. And, and hopefully, you're going to see our work plan, a reflection of efforts to create a more racially just, a more socially just Albany. So I guess briefly, what the work plan includes are some obviously past outcomes as well, and then it goes into one-time action items. So it talks first and foremost about racial equity and social justice. And we really wanted to build on the work that Nicole Anderson brought. I mean, so much time and energy was spent on that, on that plan, the report. And, and the report is the culmination of a lot of community engagement. I know there, Mayor Gary was involved. There are other people, people on the SEJC that, that worked on that, and that was the outcome of, you know, work coming out of the George Floyd, public execution of George Floyd, and things like that. So, so that moment came into, came into Nicole Anderson's work. So our hope is to finish up the work, or sorry, take that a step further, make recommendations based on her report. We also are looking at mental health issues, because those really have to do with the environment that we're living in, as well as the access and resources people have in the city of Albany for mental health services. And the third sort of topic is housing, and, and so obviously, who's living in the houses in Albany is really important, because what we know is that people's wellness, people's access to, to resources are all based on where they live. And lastly, looking at, at this amazing work that's happened around aging in place, and then youth leadership. So I don't know how long I'm supposed to speak for, but I did want to just give a little background on, on those work items, and field any questions.
All right, thank you so much, Karen. I'll go ahead and go around the room. Start with Councilmember McQuaid. Do you have a question?
I do. Thank you for that summary. That was very helpful. Could you describe the housing forum? Could you describe the housing forum and what, what your vision for that is and what it would entail?
Yeah, I think that, you know, lots of interesting conversations have happened in the SEJC around the role and, and being really clear about, about, you know, there's a lot of, there are people on the SEJC that are like Albany activists. They're, 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 you know, their goal is to, to, you know, create events and, or, and not just events, but public service work. And so, so I think that, that what I can say is, is our next steps are to fold this work into subcommittee work where we can start doing some things, including, the hope was to have some sort of housing forum where people in the city of Albany learn about what resources there are available to them, because we know we have low-income residents that live in the city of Albany. We know we have people that have been both hit by the pandemic or maybe struggling for a lot of other reasons. So the more resources, the more that our city knows about resources that are out there, the better. So we're, I think we're thinking about, you know, even something like has happened with the housing. What's it, what is the, that organization that does housing work in? Mayor Gary, what's, what are they called?
Are you talking about Berkeley Food and Housing or?
No, the, the one that does the housing.
Echo.
Echo Housing.
Echo Housing, thank you. So maybe we're, so I'm not sure exactly, but the, the energy is around creating some sort of public forum, you know, probably on Zoom where people are getting information.
Councilmember Tiedemann, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thanks for the detail in the new report. Much appreciated on the work.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
No questions, but I would agree. I appreciate the commission doing the work to scale this back. I know appetite is large, but my, my hope is to have a work plan that leads to success, which can lead to more success. So thank you very much for doing that.
And Councilmember Nation?
I have some comments, but no questions. Thank you.
All right. While we do that, let me scan the attendees and see if there are any comments or questions from the public. All right, then, Councilmember Nation, comments? Go ahead.
Mayor, there's a member of the public.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Let Julie in. Two minutes, please.
Sorry, I got my hand up late. I just, I actually just wanted to say thank you. I assume this is the only time I'll get a chance to comment on this. So I just wanted to say thank you for the plan, and I'm excited about the, about the work that you're proposing. And in particular, the homeless task force, looking more closely at mental health, and I hope that that will also be picked up later in the meeting, talking about the funds, and then the youth, the youth task force. So homeless task force and a youth task force in particular, I want to say how much I appreciate seeing them, and I hope that they happen. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, I'll go ahead and bring it back to council, Councilmember Nation. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, um, I, I want to make kind of a general, a general comment, and it relates to what Chair Zapata noted about having, you know, that this is a very, an activist committee. And I guess I'm the sole survivor now of the, the prior homeless task force. I wasn't a member. I was a member of the Waterfront Commission, but I did attend every meeting of the homeless task force from its inception until its dissolution. And we ran into, into a problem because we were an activist, a group of people who wanted to get something done. And very specifically, we had a lot of people who wanted to come together to make the, the rehousing of the bulb residents a, a model. We wanted to see that Albany invested what was needed and worked efficiently and spent the money on, on the people rather than on the process. And as anyone who followed that knows, we, we utterly failed, not through, I think, any fault of our own, but through the, the larger homeless advocacy process that is in place in the East Bay. And so we had to spend a lot of money on, on process rather than on people. But the more core problem that we had is because we were so small and because we had all the activists kind of congregated around in this homeless task force, we couldn't really be an activist organization at the same time because we were subject to the Brown Act. And as a policy advising group, we could not sit around and work on getting something done. All we could do is hold open meetings at which we would conduct deliberations, the product of which would be recommendations to the city council. And I think it's important for the, the members of the Social Economic Justice Commission to, to look at that history and draw a distinction here. Because the homeless task force became a very effective body after it was dissolved and only after it was dissolved. When it was an official deliberative advisor to the city council, it couldn't get anything done. And I think that it might be a good idea for the SEJC to kind of sort out, what are the things where you want to deliberate and make recommendations to council, and which are the things where you want to activate people? And, you know, get things done kind of on the ground. And take that latter group out of your work plan. Put the, the, the first category in your work plan, take the others out, and maybe start a different organization. You know, you could have, there's an Albany Democratic Club. You could have an Albany Progressive Club where people come together and say, you know, we want to get such and such done. We're going to advocate. We're going to involve people. And it's just a suggestion that, you know, sort of a distinction be drawn because you could be handicapping yourselves as activists by using the advisory committee as your forum for trying to get things done. And that, that's based on real experience. Thank you.
I just briefly want to say absolutely, you're absolutely right. And actually, I hope you learn more about Albany Uprising, an organization I've helped found with a group of a lot of Albany residents. So be, be, you're absolutely right, and thank you for that, Councilmember Nation.
Any other council members? Vice Mayor Jordan, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to put a, to guess them in under the mental health item. It's really three items. In terms of policy developments, there's treatment, prevention, and crisis response. And it's not the same policy, it's the same programs that would address each of those. The one that is really in most closely in the city's responsibility is the crisis response. And I think there's potentially a lot of opportunity there. We've seen other cities doing creative things in that regard. There's another city that did that creative thing over three decades ago and has still been doing it. Sort of the unsung heroes and a lot of experience there. And so I would hope that the commission would prioritize looking at crisis response before the other two. You could do it in parallel, but to the extent, again, setting yourself up for success, I, I would hope that that occurs. Not going to include that in a motion or anything. That's just some, some guidance or some suggestion. Thanks.
What was that under? Sorry, can you say that, what that was under again?
Well, there's under, under the mental health.
Okay, okay.
There's three. The mental health item includes treatment, prevention, and crisis response. And those are really three different programs, three different policy domains, different solutions for each of them. So to the extent one comes before the others, I would say crisis response because that is really something that's, that's most on the city's responsibility, and the city should be addressing. Not that it doesn't have a role on the other ones, but there are other levels of government that have programs in those other domains of prevention and treatment, more or less successful, of course. Thanks.
Councilmember McQuaid? Thank you. I have several comments. As far as the two task forces, the homeless task force and the youth task force, I, I would have to agree with Councilmember Nation, but I'm also concerned that we don't have enough bandwidth to establish any Brown Act committees, commissions, task force, whatever. So I would, I would be really hesitant in approving something that I don't think is really able to happen at this point. And regarding the youth, I, I think that there's other opportunities to work with youth, supporting organizations that are already in existence and seeing how the city can lift up some of those organizations. I think that might be a good possibility. Council actually accepted the Nicole Anderson report, so it's, it's kind of in our purview at this point to, to move that forward. There, there is a council subcommittee on the, working with the Rajon. So I'm not, again, I'm not sure that, you know, I, I know that you people were the ones that kind of started that and pushed it, but I think at this point, there's a council subcommittee working on that. The reports that come in from Albany Cares and Berkeley Food and Housing and the rent review, those are all city programs. It seems like those reports should actually come to the council at this point. You all did good work getting those started over the last several years, but I think at this point, they're established, and it's the council's responsibility to be looking at that. I believe mental health, I think Vice Mayor Jordan had a good point about the three facets of it. I, I think that there's some movement on that on the staff level, and I think that's where that should be. Having said all that, I'm really excited about the whole Aging in Place program and moving that forward. I know the city of Fremont has a great program. Berkeley has some good things happening. I would suggest that perhaps you could broaden that topic to include people with disabilities. And just as a kind of a side note, I would avoid terms like housebound. I don't think anybody's really bound into their house, so I'm sure there's a better phrase for that. So those are my thoughts. All right, thank you. I think I, Councilmember Tiedemann, nothing more? All right, go ahead, Vice Mayor Jordan.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember McQuaid. I thought I would just agree a bit on the task forces. I'm not entirely opposed, but I think the, if the SEJC, that the item is to explore having a task force. And I read that exploration as being, coming forth with a clear mission and a clear need statement. Absent that, it is going to be hard to support creating yet another body, because that's a, that's previously on another item. Albany already has far more advisory bodies than most other cities besides Albany and the state and the Bay Area. As far as the regular reports, I think it is worthwhile to have an advisory body receiving that regular information on the ongoing programs. Another Transportation Commission receives regular reports on collisions in the city. I think as a body, there might be ideas that the council's not going to have on how things could be improved. And without those reports going to the body, that's, we're not going to benefit from that, that wisdom, that creativity. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much. All right, thank you, Karen, so much for the report. The plan looks like it's going to be conducive to the growth of the city. Like you said, we do have a variety of people that are on the SEJC that are excited about this. It's going to bring a new list. I think that once you're able to figure out the direction you want to start with first and your priorities, I think it will be a very lucrative at that point. So with that said, anyone has a motion on items or any changes, suggestions before, so we can approve this?
I will move the work plan as presented.
Seconded.
All right, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Nation?
Sorry, I?
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McQuaid?
I don't even know for the reasons that I stated. I think it's, it's a good plan. I think you're overreaching a bit.
And the motion carries.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much, Chair Zapata. Have a good evening.
Good night.
All right, with that said, we'll move down to line item number 10, which is unfinished business. We'll start with 10 dash one. And hand it over to staff for the report.
Hello. So I think I'm going to start, and then I will hand it off to Isabel. I'm just going to give a brief over, reminder of an overview of what the American Rescue Plan Act funds are. It's money from the federal government to help address the economic and actual pandemic aspects of the coronavirus. They're one-time funds. We will be allocated just over $4.7 million in total. And so far, we have received $2.35 million. We'll get the second half in a year. We have come to you before to talk about these funds and, you know, bring a couple of different options for what they potentially can be used for. And this is us coming back with a, with ideas of different programs that we can use to assist individuals at this time. So the staff report goes into discussing again with the interim final rule from the US Treasury, talks about how the funds can be used. All of the funds that, or all of the programs that we are discussing here today would fall under the first spending category, which is directly addressing the economic or actual, you know, disease aspects of the pandemic. And so I think that that talks about the general stuff. So Isabel, I'll hand it over to you.
Yes, thank you, Heather. Good evening, council. So I will go ahead and talk about the programs that we're proposing to fund with ARPA funding. So based on council's interest in providing aid to residents that have been adversely impacted by the pandemic and guidance from the US Department of Treasury on program implementation, staff is proposing a temporary COVID public assistance program to be fully funded with ARPA funds. The assistance program, including the hiring of a temporary city staff member, will connect residents in need with assistance programs already in place with other agencies, as well as fund additional services already proven to help meet the basic needs of Albany residents who have been affected by the pandemic. Staff is suggesting the following coordinated components to the temporary COVID public assistance program. To facilitate the program, first, with a focus on increased community outreach, a temporary COVID community engagement specialist is being requested for a period of two years, with the option to extend it if funding is available. This position will work as a member of the Albany Cares team to increase assistance and referral capacity of the program and connect residents with existing programs at the federal, state, and county levels, as well as implement the additional resource programs suggested that I will talk about a little later. A dedicated staff member will increase Albany Cares' capacity and to provide assistance with not only letting residents know about the different programs and opportunities available, but would also help with completing applications, gathering documents, and assisting residents through the entire process, which we find that there is a need for and is also quite a lengthy process. Special attention will be taken to reach out to residents enrolled in current programs to inform them of new programs that they may qualify for. For instance, we'd look at the, the, the contacts, the residents who have received a subsidy as part of the city's the contacts, the, the residents uh who have received a subsidy as part of the city's tax exemption program and inform them of new city services such as the emergency rental assistance program or the brown bag extension program. Because most people who um are eligible for the tax exemption program would also be eligible to the, for these two, two new programs. A marketing campaign to inform residents about the, the temporary COVID assistance program would also be implemented and include items such as a citywide mailer, posters, online marketing, as well as information on KLB. The campaign would be make sure that residents know of the new resources available. ARPA funds uh will also be used to expand on existing partnerships with nonprofits and have specific expertise in the field of human services and homelessness and rental assistance. For example, um Echo Housing, which administers the city's rent review program, would expand their programming in Albany to provide emergency rental assistance to assist income-eligible renters who have been impacted by the pandemic uh with delinquent rents um and/or utilities. Berkeley Food and Housing Project would expand Albany Project Hope Services um provided to Albany's most vulnerable population by securing a second master lease house as a temporary housing resource until more permanent housing solutions are found. Additional rapid rehousing uh rental subsidies, emergency hotel stays, flex funding for program and outreach expenses, assistance with moving costs, supplies, application fees, and food. ARPA funds would also cover 10% of a clinical manager's salary to assist with disability verification and other necessary support for permanent housing. ARPA funding would also be used to provide monthly uh one grocery bag and one bag with basic needs item to anyone regardless of age who has experienced a loss of income due to the pandemic and whose income qualifies as low income per the US Housing and Urban Development Department's income category, basically expanding on our current uh Mercy Brown Bag Program that is currently held at the senior center on the first and third Friday of every month. Finally, we've heard that some families enrolled in our Friendship Club program, the city's after-school program, may be experiencing difficulties in paying for after-school childcare expenses because of the pandemic. So staff is proposing a scholarship program that provides financial subsidies on a sliding scale to families whose income has been adversely impacted by the pandemic. So we're asking for an appropriate, an appropriation of uh $1,125,000 uh for this temporary COVID public assistance program for two years to help Albany residents who are most in need of services due to the pandemic. Uh, as suggested in uh US Treasury guidance, staff will return to council after a year to give an update on the program with metrics such as number of residents served, the type of assistance provided, and other items deemed relevant to determine the program's success and usefulness, so a decision can be made as to whether the program is still needed. It should also be noted that the staff report focuses specifically on public services and funding to support Albany residents most impacted by the COVID pandemic, uh but we will return to the council with a program proposal to assist the business community uh in the near future. So that concludes my uh summary of the staff report. I'm happy to answer questions.
I did want to just add one thing. Um, I just wanted to remind everyone that the, I, the items that we're proposing are temporary items specifically related to ARPA funds. All of these items have a, you know, cutoff date, and we would come back to ask for additional funds if, you know, it is determined at the time that the programs are working and there is still a need.
Thank you so much. Thank you staff for your report. I'll go ahead and open it up to the council. I'll go around the room. Sorry, Councilmember Nation?
My, my question was answered. Thank you.
Councilmember McQuaid? Uh, thank you. I do have one question. On, I'm sorry, on page six of the report, there's a, a grid that breaks out the cost for all of this, and it's a million, 125. Is that per year or is that for the two years?
That's for the two years.
So if we got 4.7, I know we haven't done the business piece yet. It, it seems like we're not spending enough money. Boy, I've never said that before. Um, if we're only spending a million one on this part, I'm assuming the business will probably be about the same. What am I missing? Because I'm about halfway to four. Very rough numbers for Heather.
Yeah, um, I think this is really, again, it's 1.1 million for two years. We have until 2026 to spend all this money. So if, if all of a sudden people come to us and, you know, all the money's wiped out in, say, six months, we have the ability to come back to you guys and say, hey, it's working great. Um, let's, you know, appropriate more money. But at this point, we're not looking to appropriate 100% of the funds and then say, oh, we realize something later. Again, in a previous presentation, I talked about how the US Treasury guidance talks about, you know, don't actually, they don't want us to spend it all at once because then we're not sure what's going to happen down the road, how long this is going to last, things like that. So it is the kind of thing where we want to pace it. We want to make sure that we're using the money appropriately, that things that we're doing are working. And if they are, we can add more money later, but we don't necessarily want to throw it all and then have it all like caught up in one thing and then realize, oh, we really could have done this.
No, that, that makes perfect sense. Thank you. I just, I don't want at the end of the day that we're sending back any money. Thank you.
We'll, we'll find things. Don't worry.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Um, yeah, I've got more comments, but my main question was just around, uh, as I recall us discussing this last time, uh, a lot of our discussion was more around providing direct uh subsidies to people who had had any adverse effect, and I don't see that in this staff report. So I was wondering if that's not here because staff looked into it and found it wouldn't be feasible, or that this would be more effective, or you know, what resulted in what we're seeing now?
Nicole, do you want me to take it?
Sure, I can jump in as well, Heather. Basically, the answer is yes. What we're trying to do is economies of scale and utilize the maximum, really stretch the dollar as much as we can with existing third-party organizations already in Albany and already engaged with the community members who have sought out assistance and expand upon that. And then Heather, if you want to talk about the concerns with individual.
As I was looking into and thinking about potentially offering like a basic income type of program, there are a number of things that kind of brought up red flags, one of which was the idea that as far as we know at this point, there are no exemptions from at the state or federal level for municipalities that are giving out money for this money to be excluded from taxable or just regular income. So all of this money will be taxed when we give it to people. Um, we're going to have to send out tax forms and all of that. Now, it may not be taxable because I don't know everyone's individual tax situation. But the other thing is there's no exemption that I know of at, at the state level to say exclude this from income when people are thinking about food stamps or Medi-Cal. And staff is not going to have the ability to analyze each application and make sure that this money won't kick them out of those programs. So it was a little bit of a, how can we help people and make sure that it doesn't necessarily do something down the road that we're not expecting? So that was kind of why we brought this back instead of going further down the other road.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Thank you Finance Director and Assistant City Manager and other staff for putting this together. Um, and for the answer to the last question included among that. Uh, I, I see that there's a, a rental assistance component uh that would be through Echo. Is that redundant with rental assistance that's available from the state and would the program be structured so that the first dollar, you know, that, that the assistance would be to apply for funding that's available from state and or federal government as the first dollar, and then if needed, backfill with these dollars from the city? Or how would that, that work in terms of staging? How do you see that working?
Yes, I think that um anyone who, who comes to the city of Albany for rental assistance after some evaluation by um Echo Housing, if their need is greater than what our assistance program could provide, uh, they would be referred to the state program and provided assistance uh with the application process. I think we, um, each case will be different and will be evaluated. Um, and, you know, our goal is to provide the best approach and the best immediate service um to the resident to prevent any eviction or, you know, undue uh harm to, to the resident.
Okay, so I think I, I think I'm understanding that that these funds, well, put it this way, anybody who applies for these funds, will they be encouraged or will it be conditional and they're also applying for state funds? Because I presume the state, there's a lot more state funding. Um, so I think the way you're framing this makes some sense is that, that the city has perhaps more ability to react quickly to keep somebody in the place that they live. Um, and so could use these funds to pay, say, for the first month or first two months. I don't know how long the state process takes while the state process is working its way through. Um, I, I'm just not inclined to have the city use these funds as the exclusive support for somebody when there are state funds that should be, should be gone after.
And I think that that's why we also um suggested hiring a temporary COVID community engagement specialist. Because the idea in at the level that we're thinking about hiring them is because we're hoping that they're, they will already know about some of these programs and they'll be able to be a full-time person that's assessing, you know, what's the best way to help this person? How many programs are out there? And that'll be their full-time job for two years at least. You know, really sitting down with each individual and seeing what we can do to help them and help them as quickly as possible.
Great, thanks. And then I noticed, uh, and I, and I requested out of the meeting and for providing a, a breakdown on the $500,000 that would be through Project Hope. And some substantial portion of that was also for assistance on rent. Um, so I'm wondering if you could speak to the distinction between, between these two rent assistance programs?
Right, so BFHP uh help people who are literally homeless. So the rental subsidies would go to people who are newly housed, coming off the street and needing help with rental subsidies. Um, so those rental subsidies are usually for a longer period of time and, and they're for actual house, new housing of, of, of people.
Great, thank you very much. Those are the questions I had. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Um, I had to go over a few items too. So the Friendship Club Scholarship, I see that's for 100,000. And I know that um childcare is um very expensive. How are you able to come up with that, that amount? And I think more should be in that particular section and maybe taken away from some others, but before I say that, how were we able to come up with that $100,000 for childcare?
Well, it's an estimate at this time, uh, because we're not uh sure how many people will qualify for this subsidy. So, uh, as mentioned, you know, by um Heather, uh, we would come back to council. Um, you know, if there's a, a greater need than uh what we projected, um, there is. Uh, but at this time, this is for after-school childcare programs, so it's not like a full-day childcare program. So the rates are a little less, you know, uh, I think as noted in the staff reported ranges between $465 to um 620 a month.
And is that here in Albany?
This is our Friendship Club program. This is a city-run after-school program run at Ocean View and at the, in the senior center annex for adult and school kids.
And then my next question for Berkeley Food and Housing Project. So I know we just approved additional funds in our budget for them. Um, I guess my concern is how, how is this structured with this amount of money to keep residents here in Albany? Because I think the last time they met with us, you know, the, one of the representatives stated that they have a hard time with residents working with them. So what is the plan? If we give that amount of money, how are we keeping our, the residents here instead of shifting them to other cities to be housed?
Well, the, um, you know, the, one of the challenges uh is rental, rental, the rental market in Albany and finding landlords who are willing to you know, uh, house people who have been, who have been homeless and, and also you know, uh, house people who are um, have a rental subsidy and work with BFHP. So it's not necessarily, BFHP continues to look for in, for landlords, but it has been very, very difficult. And especially with the, um, the rent um amounts that, um, you know, in Albany makes it very difficult to uh house people directly from the street into a, an apartment in Albany.
Thank you. Then we consider something like foreclosure assistance for families that may have been impacted by COVID?
So this would be somebody who is late on their mortgage and is about to lose their home? We have not considered this uh as part of the program.
Okay, I, I think that should be a consideration with, with housing needs or needs of the community. It's just something that um I thought would probably help because that way we're taking care of the entire community and not just those that are in the rental community. Um, anything on, you know, you know, encampments. I, I, I recently saw someone on, right next to the library that, that is new. And so what, what can we do as far as making sure that we're providing something like hotel vouchers for homeless until they are, I mean, I know we're working with Berkeley Food and Housing, and I guess the point I'm trying to get at with this money that we receive from federal and state, you know, how could we have better structured something that it's Albany-based without using outside vendors? One, to keep more money inside our city to help our residents.
Well, the city has been working with BFHP, uh, you know, since 2013 uh to provide community outreach and engagement to people experiencing homelessness in Albany. And uh, you know, they're in the community every day doing outreach and uh providing services to people who are on the streets in Albany. I think the only component at this point, um, you know, that um is not in Albany would be the housing piece, uh, but services, the outreach, the engagement, all that is happening uh in Albany.
Right, and then, and it's no knock against the vendors that we, we already use. I do believe that they do a good service for us. But I think with the amount of money, I think with having an employee come in to focus specifically on this, I think it would have been more uh productive in a sense where we would be able to focus on our residents and keep them here. Those have been displaced, you know, some that want to come back but just can't afford. How do we address that? Just things like that, that I think that could have been considered. Um, but I understand this is just a draft and just money that um could be allocated and reviewed at a later date. So thank you so much for answering my questions. I'll go ahead and look to see if there's any attendees that have any questions or comments. Looks like we have a couple of hands up. We can give them uh two minutes.
Yeah, I was wondering, you mentioned that someone from Berkeley Food and Housing is in Albany every day doing outreach and all this stuff. I, I don't know if I've ever seen them, but if they are, it might be a good idea if they want to drop by the laundry program on Thursday and do some outreach there. I was just wondering, why not Albany, start Albany Food and Housing? You know, and have it associated with Alameda County Food Bank? And there's all this food, you know, and the, the Mercy Brown Bag Program. Um, hopefully that's all free from Alameda County uh, you know, Food Bank. I've been to the one down in uh Oakland on the Hagenberger exit, huge Alameda County food warehouse. That's where it all comes from. Um, also, let's see here. Oh, Mayor, you did speak about the person that Oh, Mayor, you did speak about the person at the the library. I did notice that as well. Thank you for bringing that up. Also, with all these millions of dollars, I was wondering if the city could just buy a house or buy an empty lot. And build an apartment building. You know, specifically for low-income housing, true. And then we would have that forever instead of using all this money and it's gone next year. So maybe, and then al- also, I was wondering if Albany has like Albany Renters Coalition. You know, ARC or something, Albany Renter Coalition. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, please.
Yeah, thank you. Um I appreciate the the detail in here um and I just have a few questions. Um and since I only have two minutes, I'll just speak fast. The brown bag um lunches or meals. I'm I'm wondering if you take into account nutritional, specific nutritional needs, or are they sort of generic? Or do people get to say whether um, yes, they do? Okay. I see Councilmember McQuaid nodding her head. Good, glad to hear that. I see that the Echo Housing application is online, so I'm wondering uh for people who don't have access to the internet, how people are supposed to be able to apply for that. Will you be working with the library, have it bookmarked at the library? Will you have sign places where they can come into City Hall, whatever? Um I just wondering how they're supposed to do that um if they don't have access to the internet. The proof of ID is another issue. There, one of the biggest barriers to people get to get housing is um an actual ID. So I'm wondering if there's any city support to help people get an ID that is that qualifies. Um I'm really surprised at the low in what is considered low income and I'm wondering if if the money is distributed. To people who are considered low income because they earn seventy-six thousand dollars, more than seventy-six thousand dollars a year. Is there a way of making sure that the people who don't earn that much? I know that's like the probably the top number, but. Is there a way that the money could be funneled to the people at the bottom of that list rather than going to people who earn seventy-six thousand dollars a month? Um I would like to also uh comment on direct cash payment. I understand that this the problems with it, but I would like to see that pursued. And um what if you're homeless, prove residency, for example, for the brown bag? Um what if what if you're uh experiencing homelessness? Um how do you prove your residency is? Can you just say I'm, you know, I'm the chant over there on that street and is that enough? I would say more, but I run out of time. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ray. I believe that's it. I'll bring it back to council. Any other comments, last minute questions? Councilmember Tiedemann, go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you. Um so I I think there's a lot of good uh you know, uses for this money here. Uh and I think a lot of these programs are definitely worth funding, especially uh any sort of homelessness services, I think will be useful. But like I mentioned my question earlier, I think I was really encouraged by our discussion of this last time. Because we had a surprising amount of agreement about trying a pretty new thing that I think is very rare to see of direct assistance. Uh without strings attached, um which I really like for a couple of reasons. First off, and I will try my best not to lecture, but this is something that I've been teaching my economics students just in the past week of. There's inefficiency if you give people uh transfers that you don't let them use to their best interest. Or to what they can best use it for. And usually, the research shows that people know what that is. And I especially worry about that because in addition to the normal modeling I could do with a graph. If people just cannot spend their money on the thing that we're giving them money for anymore, such as rent. Because they've already paid their rent via debts that they've taken on from elsewhere, then it just, the program doesn't go out the door. It doesn't work. Um and I'm especially worried about that because the loudest voices we've heard on the rent issue during COVID. Had been from the village and the voices I've heard there are that there are rental assistance programs available for them. But people cannot take advantage of them because people found a way to pay their rent using whatever they had available or any debt they could take out. And now they're not eligible for programs that directly pay their landlord anymore, which is what our program would do yeah under under this proposal. So I think that's really worrying, um because this could just be one more program that we've been told is not going to work. To uh suit the needs of some of the people who need it most. So while I think that some, I would be probably comfortable with some of this, especially with Project Hope um and with some childcare. I would really love to see the idea of direct grants with no strings attached explored more. I realize that might be difficult and you know, maybe what I'm requesting will end up in a meeting with me and Isabel and Heather where they explain to me why it won't work. If that happens, then I'm happy to be in that meeting and see why I'm wrong. But I think this is a really amazing chance for us to do something kind of novel. And I think something that would really help a lot of people more than what I'm seeing here, which at least on the rent part of it. I think, you know, looks a lot like what has already been instituted at the county and state level, but hasn't quite gotten the distance. Because of how far we are along here and how people have done what they needed to do to pay their rent. And now they need help that's not so uh prescribed. So that's all I'll say.
Thank you, Councilmember Tiedemann. You know, I just want to say that, you know, echo the same sentiments at to the point where we have to somehow figure out. How do we reduce those barriers? Because even in speaking with students or residents here um that were impacted by by COVID. You know, I would hear things like, you know, and and not just by one, that equal housing was basically shifting them out of the city. Or giving them information to go to the county. Somehow, we need to to have something here that is very conducive. To helping again the residents here instead of shifting them out and using other resources. We do have a lot of money that we could do some good with to really help our community, so. Right, Mayor Jordan?
Yeah, I'll I'll pick up on that because that was interesting, the idea of um. Uh while that comes under various terms, but but fund transfers to backfill lots of income. Um without specifying how it gets spent. Uh I think there are. Well, I know there's some other cities in the Bay Area that that are doing this, not necessarily with these funds. Um I don't know if they're doing it directly or if they're working with a nonprofit. I can understand that for Albany staff, as with. Most any program, um for Albany staff to run a program like that is not really tenable or efficient. Um but following the model of Echo and Berkeley Food and Housing Projects, it might be that there is a nonprofit out there that's working in this domain. That could be contracted um to to operate such a program. Well, I don't know where where to go with that. Um you know, the the need is now and this is what's in front of us. So I'm I'm not really inclined to not approve what's in front of us at this point. Um there is more money, so maybe that can be. Worked on or looked into on a track for the next branch of money that's coming along unless somebody else had a has a suggestion. Um I did have some other questions. Okay, I did have some other uh questions. So I guess that if uh funds for rental assistance are not taxable income because they don't go to the person. They go to the person's uh owner of the property. Is that my understanding?
It depends. Um we would send tax forms to whoever received the funds. But the other thing is. The idea is someone who was able to pay their rent ahead of time, but came on hard times. Because of COVID, in theory, can still pay their rent, even if it is taxable to them. You know, it's not necessarily, a taxable might be hard for them to pay, but it's not necessarily impossible. Whereas it's different if all of a sudden someone doesn't have healthcare or all of a sudden, you know, someone is. Doesn't qualify for their food stamps anymore the next year and they were relying on that. So there's, that's really the difference that I came down on when I, you know, was looking at. How could providing direct money to people versus in other versus through other means? And you know, what each situation was.
Okay. The other thing I noted is that in the in the resolution that's for us. Um it it includes sort of the the bottom line total. Um it doesn't include a breakout. Which, maybe that's good because, well, I guess let me ask, does that indicate some flexibility in terms of? If we pass this resolution, it's not actually going to be, you know, to the scent in each of those bins, if staff sees. It will give staff some latitude to adjust based on what's going on or, you know, how is that authorization working? If you could explain that a little more.
I I will let Mala correct me if I'm incorrect, but I I think it does give a little bit of latitude. I mean, these numbers were come up with the breakdown because of contracts, you know, Isabel reached out to each provider. And asked how much a year contract would be and I ran the numbers of, you know, what if we fill this position with a potential step increase the next year? And you know, all of that. So we, the numbers that we came up with were based on actual quotes. So it won't be, you know, that squishy, but allocating a total does allow it to be sort of squishy. If that, because that's super legal, but in legal terms, Mala.
I I do agree that it creates some flexibility.
And just to be clear, I'm I'm supportive of that flexibility. I'm not raising it out of concern, but rather to confirm that that is in fact what I'm seeing. Thank you. So yeah, I guess bringing the conversation back to any other council members, I want to continue to pursue it, depending on on the the basic income idea. Or income backfill perhaps.
Go ahead, Councilmember McQuaid.
Thank you. You know, I I think the last thing we want to do is to hurt somebody. As they can't maybe get funding the next year, as Vice Mayor Jordan said, for health benefits or whatever. I personally had an experience like that. And it was with the federal government and it it was really jarring that all of a sudden their formula and the way that normal people do things were not nearly in alignment. And it's honestly to me and it's the last thing we want to do to somebody. In it, especially inadvertently, that all of a sudden they come back and they say, well, that was nice. I could pay my rent, except now I have no healthcare. And it's your fault, kind of saying, or you should have told me or. So I I do have some hesitancy about about that. I I I like the idea, though, of giving. Sort of unrestricted money. I, all the data proves that that's a good idea, but I just, I just want to be careful that we don't inadvertently hurt somebody.
So I guess my question is, is this a one-time kind of payment or will it be reoccurring? Because I think, and and I could be wrong, with with food stamps and and housing subsidies that. That if it's ongoing and reportable, shouldn't that have a heavier impact than one? And then when doing your taxes, I believe there's a portion of month, a section that says COVID funds or something to kind of offset. And and I'm not sure completely because I know when when I did mine, that was one of the things that was asked, did you receive money? And it was either yes or no, and it was either added to that task bracket. So I think in more research would probably need to be done to make sure as a case by case, you know, right? Depending on what they're getting, how much, and then we'll be able to outline how much we can. And that's just a question I'm asking.
That would be a heavy burden on staff. That we, at this point, could not, could not do. I mean, if we contracted it out potentially, but I also wouldn't want to be wrong.
I understand, I understand. And I and I think uh we, I guess my question is, were you guys able to find? And someone that can distribute the money on our on our behalf, besides the partners we already had? Because I think most cities have have utilized a a contractor, someone.
Programs that we are considering are either direct payments to third-party administrators that we already use. Or are are done by staff. Um there was one city that I heard of that had contracted with a nonprofit. To administer a grant program that they did for businesses. Everyone else that I spoke to did it in-house. Um and there was a very strong, just do a like checkbox kind of application with no follow-up. And you get a checkout and it's easy for staff. Um but if you need to follow up and, you know, you're trying to meet. Or you're trying to see if they requalify again the next year or all of that, it it becomes, it becomes a lot more administrative.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Tiedemann, go ahead.
Which I appreciate the clarification. I I think we may have also mentioned that briefly last time we discussed, which just from my two cents. I, my preferred way of doing this would be that sort of very simple application. We don't do a lot of follow-up and, you know. Whatever makes it possible, given staff time and whatever makes it easiest to get people money. I think would be best.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Jordan, go ahead.
Thank you. Um well, I again appreciate the the Finance Director daylighting this issue of unintended consequences. Um very much. Uh we don't want to proceed with specific direction in the face of that. Possibility, but given that that there is an active, you know, there are active programs in other cities, um it's active research. I wonder if this has come up elsewhere. Such that there's there's some experience that can be garnered from existing programs that have been operated. So I, you know, I'm inclined to maybe ask staff to to do a little more research in that direction. That the council sees that.
So Vice Mayor Jordan, let me ask city manager, what is the timeframe as far as this portion of the money? Does it have to be, you know, allocated, ready to go January first, if you can provide clarity for that?
I think if council's able to take some action tonight, that would be helpful because what it will do is start to give us data on what's being received. And what, where we see trends in in what's available. If that's not all-inclusive, I've heard some concerns on the rental piece in particular. Maybe we we push pause on that component for now. Um one thing we can absolutely do. And I'm sensitive to not overcommitting, all of us, is um at least check in with our our surrounding cities. And see if they've, particularly the larger cities, who may have more resources. If they've analyzed this type of model that we're we're hearing from the council, that it remains of interest. Um to do our due diligence there and see if there's any um rather turnkey package approach. That we could model off another jurisdiction, assuming that they've done enough research to help answer some of the finance director's concerns. I'm uncertain what our findings will be, but we can, we can do that homework.
Well, I'll definitely, I'll definitely jump in. One, when I review my agenda packet, I did go on. In the county and found that Hayward, they have did some excellent work in allocating and making sure that everything was in place. Um I think that is something we can look, because it is a bigger city. They did get thirty-eight million dollars, which is much more than what we have. But I think their finding and how they're allocating their funds would would be something that we could look at or kind of model and tap into. Councilmember Tiedemann, go ahead.
Uh before I say anything, Heather, did you have something to add after Nicole?
Well, I was, my opinion would also change if you said like you wanted to give people a hundred dollars. But uh because that's not really gonna, you know, if a hundred dollars is gonna make or break them, I'm not considering this the problem. But like, uh my understanding is if you're thinking you're backfilling rent, it's going to be a lot of money. And that is where you're going to run into problems. So if if you're saying, yeah, I want a checkbox application. Where we give out like five hundred dollars. I I could be, my stomach would settle a little, but I mean, I don't think that's where you're going. Can someone maybe give an idea of like a price range that you're thinking or?
I think that's best for staff to to go back and research and we'll look at examples from other cities.
All right, thank you so much. Councilmember Tiedemann, uh one more and then we're gonna move to the next.
Yeah, yeah. No, I I I'll be brief. Um so I just wanted to thank Nicole, you you got to my, what was going to be my suggestion before I could have. I'm happy with uh passing all of this tonight, except the rental housing piece and directing more research be done on the ideas we talked about. I'll also offer that I am lucky enough to work for a couple of professors who are experts. I'll also offer that I am lucky enough to work for a couple professors who are experts on this sort of thing. So I'll definitely ask them if they have any expertise to share on this sort of welfare grant stuff. And with that, are we ready for a motion? Okay, then I will move that we pass Resolution 2021-109, decreasing the amount by $225,000 to remove the rental housing assistance portion.
I will second. With thanks to Councilmember Tiedemann.
All right, can I get a roll call? Did you repeat the motion?
Yes, it's to move the resolution with SANS, the amount that is bookmarked in the staff report for the rental housing assistance, for the purpose of researching more, more direct grants.
Okay, thank you.
Can I get a roll call, please? Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McQuaid?
Yes.
And Councilmember Nathan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you, staff, thank you, Heather, and thank you, Assistant City Manager, for your report. That said, we'll go to item 10-2, which is outdoor dining guidelines, long-term policy. Well, I'll go ahead and turn it over to staff.
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Before you tonight, we are coming back once again with the topic of outdoor dining, in part to give you a status update on where we are, and also to seek some guidance from the council this evening on a longer-term policy for outdoor dining. So I will go ahead and share my screen. And once again, we are looking at indoor, in-street outdoor dining. And for your review this evening, as I mentioned, we're gonna give you a, a status report of the current state. And then we've also provided a recommendation that the council provide initial feedback and direction to staff regarding your interest in a longer-term in-street outdoor dining program. We've had quite extensive history on this dating back to June of 2020, where the first council meeting was held to discuss this. This has gone back and forth between Economic Development Committee and Transportation Commission. Most recently, I went to Transportation in September, and we're back this night. This is the fifth time we're bringing it back for, for discussion to, to review the current state. Just to refresh everyone's memory, outdoor dining became permitted under the County Public Health Order in June, June 18th, 2020. With that, staff reviewed proposals and developed conditions of approval for outdoor dining installations. The ultimate goal was to provide flexibility, initially with twelve was a low barrier, you know, kind of cost-effective installation, so that businesses could utilize outdoor dining as a means to keeping their businesses open, maintaining cash flow, that sort of thing. And then, as it relates to, to having the installations in the street, safety, there were signage installations that were installed in February of this year to help reinforce safe driving behavior adjacent to dining installations. As I mentioned, this went to the Transportation Commission in September, and the meeting minutes are included in your packet for reference. As part of that, the commission expressed interest in a survey that would collect additional information from businesses on the impacts of the program, as well as developing a more detailed safety element for the installations. The commission also expressed support for a time extension to continue the program for another year to give businesses more time and certainty with the current program. Currently, there are 15 permits for outdoor dining on Solano Avenue for in-street installations. And this gives you kind of a map snapshot, you know, from, from closer to San Pablo and Solano, all the way up to Wardway Street on the eastern end. By the current program, the installation size varies from one to three vehicle parking spaces, as well as utilizing sidewalk areas at corners where there are ballbots that can accommodate outdoor seating. With respect to location, most in-street locations are at corners or edges of angled parking to maximize the useful square footage and, and comfort. Where most practical, the spaces are adjacent to the restaurant frontage. Approximately 12% of the overall vehicle parking capacity on Solano is utilized. And with respect to the actual dining capacity in the street, there are approximately 75 tables. One thing that came about from a poll that was conducted by staff with the businesses is that a majority of dining customers still prefer outdoor dining to indoor dining. And this gives you a snapshot of some of the installations on Solano Avenue. You can see here the 1100 block, Five Tacos, Boss Burger. And then here, you have it on the south side of the street, as well as Cafe Rendezvous. And here again are some, some additional installations further, one in that general vicinity at Zaytoun. And Mr., yeah, I'm not gonna opine on that one. But here, you can see further up the street at Kim's Cafe, and there at Barney's. And once more, a few more snapshots of, of streets, in-street installations. All eight of the responses from existing permit holders reflected an interest in continuing outdoor dining, as well as upgrading their outdoor dining installations. At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Michelle Plous, our Community Development Associate. She has conducted research on other cities and what they're doing with respect to, to outdoor dining and the commonalities that they have with their ongoing programs.
Thanks, Ann. Yeah, so a lot of cities throughout California have started thinking about making outdoor dining, outdoor dining permanent. And most are at a kind of similar stage to where we are, just at the beginning of trying to figure out what this would look like. But the four that are listed at the top here have gotten farther along. And in all cases, except Alameda, have actually passed a program for long-term outdoor dining. And just a few of the kind of common threads throughout all of their programs, they'll require insurance to be held by the permit holder that covers the city. They all require varying levels of detail, but ADA compliance with the main aspects of the parklets. They can't obstruct the gutters, they have to have trashcans, the movable furniture needs to be stored securely when it's not in use. And they also require that the permit holder be responsible for maintenance. Next slide, please. So I won't go into all of this, but some of the big differences are particularly when it comes to permit fees. So Alameda and San Francisco have both chosen to start small. With Alameda, it's $500 a year annually, and that's going to increase as the years go on. And San Francisco has actually waived fees until 2023, at which point they'll start doing an initial fee of $1,000 to $2,000, and then 750, $15,000 per year at that point. Berkeley is a big contrast to that. It's going to have a permit three of about, a permit fee of about $6,000 annually. And that's equivalent to the cost of that metered parking over the course of an entire year. So very different approaches in that respect. There are also some differences when it comes to public accessibility. Berkeley and San Diego don't really get into this at all. Alameda requires that these spaces be open to the public during non-business hours. And San Francisco actually requires that there be a public bench somewhere in the structure that's available to the public at all times. Next slide, please. Again, I won't get into all of the, the various numbers here. But as you can see, they, each city has a relatively similar layout of, of the size of what these installations look like. They're basically about two parking spaces with some buffer on each edge to, to varying degrees. And also some stipulations to make sure that they're not interfering with utilities, getting in the way of, of gutters and that sort of thing. And next slide, please. One of the really big differences is that San Diego and San Francisco have a lot more detail and actually have manuals with specifics about what these installations should look like. So this is from San Diego's manual here. And as you can see, it has pictures and it has a lot of numbers about, you know, exactly how many feet from, from the curb and the right-of-way and all of these different, different pieces of the construction. It has sections about making sure you have adequate wheel stops and safety measures, that sort of thing. And next slide, please. And then San Francisco actually goes into even more detail about the construction, the types of materials that need to be used, getting into the, you know, the two-by-four versus four-by-fours, and, and a lot more detail there to make sure that they're very safe and well-constructed parklets. In contrast to that, Berkeley and Alameda have chosen to go for a simpler, but also more vague approach, where they, they really just have an ordinance that has a few requirements about sizing and, you know, a few safety things. But it doesn't go into nearly this level of detail to require that they be built in a certain way or with certain materials. So that kind of gives you a sense of some of the different approaches down the line. You know, if, if council directs staff to look into this in more detail and really create a plan, then we could potentially base our program off of one of these and, and take one of these approaches for it. Next slide, please. So, there have actually been 20 emails received on this agenda item, and I believe those were attached along with the rest of the material, so seems to be a hot topic. And, next slide, please. And just as far as the future, the next steps, as I said, if council directs staff to develop a long-term program, our general timeline is that in the next couple of months, we'd be doing resident and business surveys to more, to learn more about the needs and wants of those groups. And then start developing what a plan might look like, talking through the different survey results and bringing those to various commissions in the first few months of the years to transportation, economic development, planning, and zoning. And then potentially coming back to the city council with a summary report of all those thoughts of both the public and the various committees and commissions in April of next year. And that's all. So we'll be happy to answer questions, and I believe we also have Jeff Bond, our Community Development Director, here to answer questions, too.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Seth, for your report. I'll start off with Councilmember Nathan. You don't have any questions? Okay, Councilmember McQuaid?
Yes, I have several questions. And I, I guess my questions are pretty specific to what we're already doing, rather than the overall, is that, is that okay? I'm curious about what kind of heaters are allowed. It seems like now there's, the, the use permit says no heaters. But I understand some really are allowed, and I just want to be sure that we know everybody has the right heater. So I just keep asking my questions and get one being answered.
I mean, does anyone have an answer for that?
I could jump in. Good evening, everyone. Jeff Bond, the Community Development Director. So the specific, with respect specifically to the heaters, the original conditions of approval did identify that the heaters were not allowed because it's the potential danger of a propane device close to a structure and, and being knocked over and so forth. The fire department has been taking the lead on enforcement of that, and they have come across some heated heaters that are allowed by the fire code. And so on a case-by-case basis, they are using their discretion to allow those heaters to be, be operated. But we would see that as one of the questions that we would want to get more, get to the bottom to in this upcoming process, if you wish us to proceed.
Yeah, I kind of have a problem with things that, like improper heaters or perhaps electrical wires that could be dangerous today or tomorrow, making it part of a process that's going to go on for another six months. I just, that doesn't feel very safe to me. And we also talk about having things in storage while they're not being used, and that seemed to be something I, I've heard from several different merchants that if they're not using the space, why do they have it blocked off? And is there a way to share a little better? And then I have a couple that I'd just kind of like to talk about specifically, but I don't know if that's the agenda item.
I, I'm not sure if we're completely prepared for an individually looking at, nor is it perhaps the proper print, the purview to do that. But if, if there's some policy aspect to that, we can try to answer your question.
Well, I guess my one, one of my concerns is the two 20-minute spaces at the post office. I've received comments from residents, especially seniors, that would like to go to the post office. And it was perfect when the 20-minute spaces were there, because they could just pull in, go to the post office, get back in their car, and there was a lot of turnover. And it's now being used as a, both as parking places are gone. And there already are tables and benches on the bulb out there. So it's like, why does a person get not only one outdoor place, but two outdoor places? And it's impacting people who are trying to go to the post office, and here we are in the holidays. That might be something, something to think about. And I noticed the other day that on the corner of Solano and Stanage, so crossing Stanage going southbound, the way the tables are set on the corner restaurant, and they have the high tables, you really can't see if there's a car waiting to turn in any direction or go straight across. So I think, and I think with that, it's just a matter of adjusting where the tables are. So it might be worth looking at all the corners to see if, if a motorist or a bicyclist, I mean, bicyclists would never see a car there. And I think that's, that's the dangerous thing that we need to look at sooner rather than later. I think that's it for right now.
We'll look into those two situations in particular for, I think you're raising good points, particularly with the holidays coming in the post office. I would want to check in with the, all the businesses along there, just to make sure that, that, that they understand why we're looking at that and, and why we're making some changes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Uh, no questions right now, just comments, which I'll wait for.
Vice Mayor Jordan, any questions?
I know, but I'll, well, yes, but for a second, the sideline concern in temporary or the short-term parking, that can be provided, you know, a little bit further down the block, or there might be some other solution. And is there, you know, it seems like the issue rotates around benefit for some businesses and problems for other businesses. Is, is there any data, are there any studies, and they don't necessarily need to be all any specific, on where this comes down? You know, if you convert 5% of the parking spaces, given this park occupancy, then you increase economic activity or you decrease it. I mean, it's, it's hard to make these decisions in a, in a vacuum. I mean, that's what we'll do, or that's what I'll do if I have to, but I prefer to do it based on some data.
I, I haven't seen anything in, in the professional associations and literature and conferences so far as of yet. But it's not to say that people might not be looking at this. We have been collecting from time to time since the pandemic began, some parking occupancy data. And one of our intentions is to bring that to you, so you can see exactly what the actual parking occupancy might be in an area where there is, is a concern. I, I think it's fair to say that to the, the west side of, of Solano Avenue, say around Canes and Stanage and so forth, occupancy rates are much higher than further east. So, meaning parking is easier to find further east, but we can bring hard data that's been collected probably a couple dozen times over the last 12 or 18 months for it to, to help inform any decisions that you'll ultimately be making.
Thank you, and, and I mean, parking occupancy is one metric, but Albany's a, well, Berkeley is second lowest for number of trips completed by driving alone, and Albany is third lowest in the entire Bay Area. So I am really more interested in economic activity, which is harder to get at than the parking data. It's really economic activity that, that I'm more interested in. There was a suggestion from somebody who emailed, Francisco Papalia, regarding the, the street sweeping time limits on the blocks to either side of Solano Avenue, that they currently, on the, the days of street sweeping, extend until 2:00 PM. That they currently on the, the days of street sweeping extend until 2:00 PM. And he had a suggestion if those could extend only till 11:00 PM, I'm sorry, 11:00 AM. And, uh, that would provide for at least that parking not to be blocked off on those particular days during the, the peak midday hour, hour. I don't know if staff has any take on the feasibility of that. Um, maybe it won't fit in the contract, you know, there's all sorts of logistics involved, but I thought it was a creative idea, so I wanted to ask.
I, I, I agree that that's a creative idea and, and a good one, and, um, I would need to consult with, um, colleagues in the public works department. Who manage the street sweeping program to see if the, the schedule, the routing or what have you can be modified to, to try to make that work.
Okay. Well, for my part, I'm, I'm supportive of that investigation. Thanks.
I had a quick question. Um, so the council passed resolutions back in March. I wanted to see, are you able to provide us? An overview of what transpired, if there were any trend, um, movement as far as the number of parking spaces being. Used and those that have put up their. Outdoor parklets. If you can provide any data on that.
And you might need to help me with this. I don't know that there have been any significant changes, but, but I may have not be aware of.
Yeah, I don't think there, there has been, um, much change. I think the only installation that has been removed since then was, was bold. Uh, once indoor dining be, became an option, they've removed their, uh, outdoor installation restoring on-street parking in front of their business.
So the businesses that were using more than, uh, to a lot of spots, were they being enforced? Or what did we do with them regarding with those resolutions? And was there any enforcement on? No?
No, we haven't done any enforcement.
Well, I can clarify, my, my recollection of. Council's direction was to provide staff flexibility on the number of parking spaces. Um, to, uh, approve a permit for. Um, but there was no limitations to parking spaces. I know that was the original proposal. It came went to. I think it actually went to Transportation Commission when I was on it, um, before I. Joined this body and the Transportation Commission said, no, it makes more sense for it to be flexible because some businesses front on. Three parking spaces and they're larger businesses. Um, so that's my reflection of, of what we pass, but staff please correct if I'm got that wrong.
That, that was my recollection as well.
And, and also just to add to that, um, in the beginning of the outdoor dining process, we did require consent from adjacent businesses that may lose the parking in front of their, their business. Um, and throughout this process, we haven't ever received any sort of explicit request, um. You know, re- revoking that, that authorization.
So the letter that went out, what did it specifically state? Because they, cause speaking with some business owners and I'll, I'll just name drop, um, the toy store next to, um. Chesmont Shore, she complained because she felt that they had too many parking spaces. And she said, didn't the council just pass that there should only be two spaces, um, utilized? And, and, um, her next door neighbor, you know, he, he did accommodate by moving though. So, I mean. That, that was brought to my attention early on. So that's why I'm asking.
Well, I'm, I'm glad that the two businesses were able to collaborate to make a solution that worked. Um, to answer your question, though, we, we haven't gone into an enforcement mode on any of this. Um, if there's, uh, and I'm, today I reached out, this, this evening, we've been reached out to one of the, the businesses so far that have contacted us expressing some concern. The interesting thing is we're not hearing much from these businesses directly. And, um, it, 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 I think it's very important to, if council members or members of the public hear that there's a business that's unhappy about it. Um, let us know who they are and we'll try to reach out to them. I've wanted to set up a walk with, with some of the business district representatives so that we can. Really get that one-on-one contact. Um, but, you know, we, we haven't been receiving a lot of complaints about this in our office at least. So, um, please help. It would be a big help if people would can communicate that all the way to us. And then we can, when we're willing to go into enforcement mode if we have to. Um, I don't think we want to, you know, certainly don't want to. We think through collaboration, communication, we can make it work. But, um, uh, if we need to reduce the size of the, the, these, these, um. Uh, outdoor dining establishments, we'll do it.
Right. I'll open it up for a public comment and then we have come back and determine whether we want to establish a long-term, uh, outdoor dining program. And kind of lay out some of the logistics we would let staff to research and implement on our behalf. So I'll open it up for public comment. Two minutes, please.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I was gonna ask for three minutes because I have many creative ideas pertaining to this purview. Um, but you know, sounds like we need a survey. Right? Um, this would be probably a good use of a survey. I know we create a lot of surveys. But we might need to want to put a city survey to these business owners. Um, that way they could submit, you know, an anonymous. Either complaints or positive suggestions about neighbors or. You know, that way, I think this is a good idea, a good, um, situation for a, a survey. I mean, I can go walk up and down Solano and ask these businesses and do a survey and turn into you guys. Um, but I just think this would be a good idea, a city survey. Also, um, I know we used to have, finally, we got, uh, one ADA parking spot approved a few years back. Um, I was wondering if there's still an ADA parking space available per block. Or did? Um. Did we forget about that? Also, the side corner where it's 90-minute parking off of Solano, maybe temporarily Transportation Committee or something. Or I'm sorry, City Council, you guys could just approve, um, turning that 90 minutes into maybe 15 minutes for now. Or on that 90 minutes around the corner, that first spot be the handicap spot. That way you could still have, um. You know, tables open on Solano. If you don't offer ADA parking on Solano, maybe it could be the first parking space off of Solano. Like you mentioned, the senior citizens want to just park at the post office. Right? But then, you know, there's a restaurant there that those first spaces are occupied. But maybe that first space on the 90-minute can be designated ADA. Or 15 minutes, green or something. And then behind that can still be 90 minutes until the first residence. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, Madam Mayor.
All right. We'll turn it back over to council to finalize. Nope. I'm sorry. It looks like there's more hands popped up. So I'm sorry, Anne. Give me a few more minutes. Looks like we have three. Anyone that wants to speak on this item, please raise your hand.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead, please.
Okay, perfect. This is Jennifer Hansen Romero, a resident of Albany. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I also the president of Solano Avenue Association, but tonight I'm speaking on my behalf right now. Um, I just wanted to say on this, um. I've always felt like the most important thing is the safety of these installations. Um, many of the other cities based upon the report that was brought to us earlier, which I appreciate the report. I thank you for, um. Your due diligence and that. And, uh, just wanted to say that safety is one of the biggest concerns of these installations and structures on the street. So. Um, the other thing is, is based upon the report, I noticed San Francisco was brought up a lot. Berkeley was brought up a lot. I just want to keep in mind Albany is one square mile. This is our only business district. It doesn't have other business districts to shop from. So, and we are always losing parking spaces. A lot of these parking spaces, most recently I realized were not even marked correctly and brought it up to Public Works, which they promptly corrected, and I thank them for that. Um, and also based upon the timeline that we're talking about. With no real decisions, uh, made on that report until possibly April of 2022. Meantime, we are entering the holiday season with the rainy weather where these spaces will be less used. And well, we'll need to be, um, have better access to the retailers and, you know, professional services. Post offices, all of that. So that is a concern. The blockage of other business storefronts who are retailers who, um, really. Need that recognition during the holiday season is also important.
Jennifer, your time is up.
Oh, can I get just one more minute? Uh, thank you. So, um, a lot of the professional services that were closed down throughout the beginning of this pandemic, actually three quarters of. The start of the pandemic and when they reopened, um, they have had a lot of clients and neighbors of mine. Who can't walk a block to get to their businesses and need to have better access to their front storefronts. Um, also, the other thing, a lot of the neighbors really want to work together. And they don't want to be a bad neighbor. So that could be a potential of why you're not getting the, the complaints and such that you need.
Next, please.
Hi, thank you so much. Um, this is Bonnie Davidson. I appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to this. I just wanted to mention, um. So everyone is aware, this program was initially put out to all business types. It has to be known that this was available to everybody who wanted to take advantage of it, and it just so happened that restaurants were the ones who jumped on it. Um, all businesses were able to do this in the beginning of the pandemic and are, I think, still able to apply and discuss this with our city staff. Um, I would like to encourage, I hear this coming up from different business owners as well. There are concerns about the holidays coming up and people. Um, needing that quick parking or for deliveries. I would love to see if maybe our business associations would work to help support the businesses by offering a holiday concierge. To pick up packages at your car window in a drop-off zone and run them into the post office or bring something out to your car. Creative solutions to make our business district work for everybody while maintaining this element that seems to be. Well-supported by our community and very enjoyed. People are still not comfortable dining indoors. And until we really get this to a place where everything is back to normal, I think we need to look at making this permanent. In addition to that, um, our businesses, when they go in, are required to put in bike parking. And, you know, we want to encourage this pedestrian-friendly city. So I think that we should look at the public comments that were submitted in the letters about how much more revenue we gain from dining and cycling parking. And people walking in our city, um, and really maintain that. And also just continue to be supportive of all. Businesses in every way that we can. And if this is one way we can support some businesses, let's keep looking at ways we can support all businesses. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your comment. Next, please.
Hi there, uh, Amy Smolins here. Um, look at the public comment. I mean, the vast majority from residents and business owners and customers from other towns is really supportive. So read them and see what they appreciate about the outdoor dining, what everyone appreciates about the, the outdoor dining. The other businesses appreciate the foot traffic. Um, of the two businesses who, who objected, one has no pandemic parklet on its block at all. And one has, the other has one on the opposite side of the street. So it doesn't seem like they were the people who were really affected. Um. Clearly outdoor dining has been a, a net positive over the past year and a half. It's been here for a year and a half. It's been a success. It will continue to be a positive. It'll continue to be a success. Um, I live on the 900 block of Canes and people come and go. It's obviously half a block off, uh, Solano. People come and go. There's plenty of parking. There's also a parking lot behind the post office. So I don't see why the post office is such a big deal when there's a parking lot there. Um, there's really no indication that there's a lack of parking. And as far as the percentage of parking spaces being used, the percentage given was percentage of motor vehicle parking. But there's also more than 200 bicycle parking spaces on Solano or within a half a block of Solano. So the actual percentage of parking spaces used is smaller than what was indicated. Um. A few of members of the public also made suggestions of how to enhance the car parking availability, um, using the 800, 900 blocks and also, um. And also some of the smaller lots like a mechanics bank or something like that. Also, one of the, uh, letters mentioned cross-promotion. Um, be creative. Use the positive of the foot traffic and cross-promote your business. Um, I'm going to take a little bit of extra time also, since someone else did, if you don't mind. Um, cross-promote. If Umommy puts some of their displays in Boilong, that is a positive for Umommy. So that's, it's cross-promotion. It's foot traffic. If people are really concerned about ADA accessibility and safety, which they absolutely should be. Let's, let's do that. And the businesses need money to improve that, to do that. Um, they've spent all their money of their own. They've spent their hard-earned money and some grant money to do what they've done. So the city should chip in some money. The business associations can chip in some money. It's been a success over a year and a half. Let's help improve them and, and really help the businesses, help all the businesses and. Give them a true, safe, accessible path to permanence. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, please.
Hello?
You can hear me. There's a bit of echo.
Um, yes, I'm just a, a community, uh, member. Um, anyway, I've been listening to everything going on tonight and. Um, I also own a business, uh, in Albany. And the one thing I really want to get across to, um, the city and the public is. Um, when I opened a business, I was basically forced to put in a bicycle parking, uh, area. Um, and so as a city that kind of promotes itself, um, on biking and walking and, uh. Easy access to all that kind of stuff. I don't know why we have an issue with parking, especially when, uh, Michelle here says it's only 12% that's taken up. I don't understand it. Um, quality of life is way better with these parklets out there. Um, and we should be promoting. Uh, walking and biking in this city, uh, above all else. Um, also it helps with, uh, you know, greenhouse reduction, uh, for gas and stuff like that. Anyway, uh, just concerned citizen. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, please.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, so as Jennifer said, um, I would definitely want to make sure that safety is our priority. Okay. And we are open. If the city officials need to come and check different businesses, if the parklets are strong enough for the weather condition. Or if whatever other things, whatever is hazardous thing or not for the residents, for the pedestrians, for anybody. So we are open for that. I mean, if it is needed, we are already like. More than a year that the parklets are there, that the structures are there. So we would want to check, if we, we would want, if city officials want to check. So we are open to that. Now, uh, considering about the outdoor dining, I would want that when the surveys are taken, they should be having questions. Or you should be putting, putting questions or, uh, or options about the different kinds of outdoor dining. So some have parklets, some have, uh, the bulb-out corners. So, uh, uh, the, the decision, whether you want to keep outdoor dining or not, will be different for these both kind of, um, structures. Okay. And then also, uh, this, uh, like as, uh, some other, uh, speakers also said. That this is the only, uh, district, this is the only business district. So we want to keep the, uh, keep it going live and outdoor dining, of course, is adding the vibrancy to it. So let's keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. My last one, please. Go ahead.
Yes, hi, this is Nick Pilch. Um, I don't want to say very much because a lot of good comments have already been, uh, made by email or, um. Verbally, uh, but just another voice to support the outdoor operation of businesses. And to support continual tweaks to, uh, the outdoor operation of business, uh, as we go along to optimize it. And for everyone. And also I note about safety. If you do have safety concerns, if, 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 if it does seem like there are safety concerns, I please ask you to also go to the data. And find out where, what data is available about the safety of parklets or what should be done about parklets. I just did a very quick internet search and there seems to be some data out there. So, uh, let's, uh, let's use data to drive the safety discussion. And thank you very much.
Thank you so. Thank you so much for your comment.
All right, I'll go ahead and bring it back to council staff. I just had a quick question. So as we're exploring, you know, finalizing and implementing a long term position, what are some immediate fixes that can address those safety concerns that were brought up? And had on one of her slides, one location, I don't know the name of the location, but it had just like wooden, I don't know what that was. It was something that was on the pile. It didn't seem safe as far as structure, right? So what could we do to help that, that by that business owner to put something more structurally sound in place? And is, and how, and I guess, what other measures can we take to, you know, protect the business owners as well as the patrons that go in and use the parklets?
Just, just so I understand the question correctly, with respect to the issue of safety, it's not, what you're asking is really specific to the occupancy of the structure and that patrons wouldn't be injured. It's, it's not a vehicle issue. It's more of just how the functionality and safety of the actual installation. Okay.
So I think what we can do immediately is, is do a survey of all the installations as they stand today. Review their compliance and for the ones that appear to, the people who are in them be vulnerable, we'll start to engage with them about how they can make an upgrade. The challenging part will be until we have final standards that have been vetted and approved by council, we're not exactly sure what to tell them. But I understand your point. I share that anxiety about safety of these things. It's, it's kind of, we're going in new ground here in the Bay Area with these installations. So we will go and engage with them and see if we can find an interim solution. And then ultimately, what we bring back to you in a few months, we hope to have very good established clear guidelines for safety standards for all of these. And maybe some of these will need to be rebuilt or removed if they can't meet the new standards.
Thank you. Councilmember McQuaid.
Yeah, a couple of things about safety. As you're doing that, you'll be looking at electricity and heaters, I'm assuming. And the other thing I noticed last spring was the standing water, especially in the big wine barrels or whatever they are. They have sort of a dip on the top. It's just the way they're designed. So we end up with standing water, which I'm sure Vice Mayor Jordan can tell us all about mosquitoes and standing water. So I think that's something that we just need to remind people, if you have standing waters, push it out. You know, get rid of it. So we don't have that problem. And I assume the other piece of safety is you'll be looking at, if you're driving, if you can see, or if you're riding a bicycle, that you can see and be seen around some of these installations. That's part of what you'll be doing.
I think based on your comments earlier in the discussion with respect to visibility around corners, that is something we will definitely look at. Thank you.
We have worked with at least one of the installations to improve their visibility at the intersection when they first went in. So we're aware of that issue, but I'm glad you brought the particular one to our attention because I hadn't been aware that maybe some of those tables had moved into the, that triangle at the corner where we want to keep it clear.
Table, it just doesn't work.
Okay, thank you. Any other council member have any comments? Councilmember Nathan, go ahead, please.
I'd just like to comment that I think these, that outdoor dining is the best thing to have happened to for the vitality of our business district in many, many years, maybe in my lifetime. It's just, it has really transformed Solano Avenue for the better. I think that will ultimately redound to the benefit of everyone who does business along the avenue. I, I share concerns about safety. I, and anything that we can do to improve safety and that would include slowing traffic on Solano Avenue, contributing to the expense that will be needed to defray safety, the expenditures for, for safety items are, would be, are things that we absolutely should, should consider. I would still say, and you know, I'm a broken record about this, but I still think that lighting and crossings along Solano Avenue continue to be grossly inadequate in many places. And, you know, we talk about the danger of these parklets. I think that the danger, the, the danger that strikes me is crossing Solano Avenue at night by pedestrians. The, that, that's what, and I, of course, Vice Mayor Jordan, I, I am not holding up any data to substantiate what I'm saying, but that is certainly my impression as somebody who spends a good deal of time walking around in the area. So to respond to the questions that you've posed, does the city council wish to extend permitting? Yes, I think that the sooner that we get to the point of being able to say, yes, this is, this is permanent, the better. I'd like to see us move in that direction. As far as questions to be included in the residents and business survey, and I first want to say, well, I'm very sympathetic to people who have trouble parking, whether it's in their neighborhood or trouble parking their customers on the, on the commercial areas. It's just the reality. Parking is going to get tighter and tighter and tighter over time. And we have to plan for that and plan around it. Trying to suppress economic activity in order to save parking is just a completely backwards way to look at this. The questions that I'd like to be included in the resident business survey would include what kind of measure, what kind of transportation demand measures might be helpful. For example, if we were to find that there is a shortage of parking within a block or so of Cornell School and that perhaps we have during school hours and we have, you know, school, people using the school who are parking in the area. That's a form of parking that is relatively easy to address and replace with other travel modes because teachers don't need to go back and forth a great deal typically and have very regular and predictable schedules. The YMCA, there might be ways that the YM, that patrons of the YMCA could be incentivized with, with transit passes or some, some other means. It seems kind of ironic that people who want some exercise are driving their car and then, you know, taking up parking in the area. There's a lot of things that could be done, but that, the issue around when we, when exactly are we experiencing shortages of parking and what businesses might have capacity to implement effective transportation demand measures that the city could help support are all things that, that I hope that we would look at. But I think the goal should be to support this, not to suppress it for the sake of parking or anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nathan. Michelle, staff, I have a question for you. So in your research, when you were looking at San Francisco, Berkeley and Alameda, what was the timeframe that they were able to come up like with this plan? Are they still working on it? Like, how were you able to, to find out how long it took versus, and again, I'm looking like, how quick can we get this taken care of?
That's a great question, Mayor Gary. I don't know specifically. Cisco and Berkeley were done, I believe, about two months ago. So a little bit, they've been at this for a little bit longer, but I, I don't actually know when they started the process, but I could look into that later.
I understand. I just think, you know, we're as a smaller city that, you know, will be able to address some of the, the concerns that have been brought up in public comment and council members. And then how can we kind of prioritize this to move this if we decide to incur, incur a long term policy? So thank you so much.
Mayor, Mayor Gary, if I may add to Michelle's answer, if the council wishes us to expedite this, this process, we, we did build in some community engagement at various committees and commissions. It, one of, some of the direction you could give this evening is to shorten that process and consolidate it. Or if the council wanted to take the lead directly on this, that's a possibility too. I think there's value, of course, going to committees and commissions and some things get vetted out, but it does take time and it's your decision where to, where to fall on that trade off between thoroughness of engagement and how much time we spend on it.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Go to councilmember Tiedemann and then Councilmember McQuaid.
Thank you. So I'm heard by the good discussion we're having about this. First and foremost, I just wanted to praise staff for this one. We've, we've seen this before and every time we do, we have some things to note, but it's also obvious that everyone working on this at the city level has a lot of time for it, is doing their due diligence about parking, about the permits and is really working to make this program flexible and work. And which means that I think a lot of the time we don't have to give substantive, huge amount of, you know, redirection because it's being done really well. On that note, I think it's pretty obvious to me when this has come to us before and now that I think one of the things that's made this very successful is that it's been a pretty flexible program and we've, we've confirmed every time that we've seen it that it should be flexible. So in the, in the design going forward, I think we should try and keep that as much as possible and base it off the more permissive versions of the comparison cities we saw that don't charge as much of a fee, that, you know, don't give incredibly rigid guidelines for how these structures have to look. You know, I think the more permanent version will have more direction there, but keeping the sort of feel of this is something that I think staff is perfectly able to handle, figuring out exactly what it should look like and working on a case by case basis. I'd also say that the timeline we've been presented with, I think, sounds like a really good one. And for anyone with concerns about this process and parking space and anything, the survey should help, the additional input at each level should help. This is not us saying, you know, this is how it's going to work. Make it so. And it happening tomorrow. This is, the staff report outlines a pretty robust process that I think sounds like exactly the way to go about this going forward. So with that, I, I think this seems good and, you know, with our additional little tidbits of safety and other things here and there, it'll be really great.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Tiedemann. Councilmember McQuaid and Vice Mayor Jordan, I see you. Did you have a question?
I think that the one thing we should think about is, is our messaging as far as parking. Yeah, I, I think we want to be sensitive to the people that absolutely have to park, that they absolutely can't ride a bike or they can't walk or whatever, and not make them feel like they're being, being excluded because everybody can walk two blocks to get someplace. Those, those kind of messages could be hurtful to people. I mean, let's, let's think about that. So I think we just need to be careful that, that we balance how we, how we phrase these things and be sensitive to people's needs and try, excuse me, try to come up with some alternatives. I think flexibility is good, but I think as we move this forward, we really need to have fairly straight to guidelines. And so that, I think part of the problem we're having right now is, is it's a little too wiggly. It's, you know, some of them have built real structures that I think are serving us well. And then some, as was related to earlier, they have like sawhorses. I'm not sure how safe that is, but it kind of fits because we'll be in so flexible. I think we're going to need to have a program with, with real standards to it and safety standards and lighting standards and the size and how sturdy the structures are. I think we're really going to need to do that. Otherwise, we just keep kind of kicking this down the road. And I think it's, it's time that we start really firming it up. I would encourage us to charge at least some sort of a fee for using public space. I think, I think that's reasonable. So I hope that's part of the final project. I think that's it for me for now. All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor Jordan. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I will note that some attendees commented, noted this is our business district. I do want to acknowledge that San Pablo is also a business district. Not that there's any parklets there because Caltrans, I guess, I don't even know if anybody's attempted to, to go with Caltrans on that. It'd be a difficult path to take. I am supportive of what staff has laid out in terms of timeline, in terms of heading towards a route to parklets being available over the longer term to those businesses that want them. That is in the absence of data. You know, my preference would be to be making this decision based on data regarding what supports the most economic activity. The absence of that, all I have to go on is anecdote and judgment. And in that regard, survey, self-selection survey makes me a little nervous because perception doesn't always match reality. That's why we have science. And so without looking at actually revenue data and, you know, some, some control data, it's harder to know what to make of self-selection survey. Of course, good ideas can come from that. I'm not saying it shouldn't be done, but I don't know that that will provide the metric on how do we most foster economic activity in these areas. I do want to raise again the sidewalk issue. I'm going to go ahead and turn my screen quickly. I just have one slide. I wanted to show on that. So I, I would ask that in, in pursuing a process that develops, how encroachment permits will be issued for using converting car parking, that there's a lot of use of sidewalks that I don't believe has come under or is permitted as an encroachment. So here's two examples where there is furniture from adjacent businesses and put on the sidewalk. Now, maybe it's on there, maybe it's on private property, maybe it's on city property. I, you know, I don't know where the line is. And but it has effectively narrowed the sidewalk to four feet. And then it was mentioned by Councilmember McQuaid that one of the, the parklet is also associated with tables, go ahead and stop sharing that, is associated with tables that run on, on a corner, on an extended corner of bulb outs. I believe for thinking the same one, I, I think they've actually built a pony wall adjacent to those tables or between those tables in the general traffic lane, which obscures sightlines even more. So I am concerned about that. So in general, and I'm asking or suggesting if this council wished to have a, a parallel process on sidewalk encroachments so that businesses that are using sidewalk space also need to get a permit. Another location that concerns me in that regard is, is a location where there's two tables for business. And it's longer term, I think, pre pandemic, that are on a corner and they're situated, they're at a size and they're situated in a manner that makes it very hard for somebody to travel from one curb ramp to another across the corner. And from the staff report and staff comments, I don't think that's permitted either. So I think looking at both sides of the public domain in that regard would, would be useful. And as far as charging, yeah, I think there should be some, I think there should be some charge for using the space because it takes staff time to, to oversee this and review it. So I think it's my fair that there's, that there's some, some charge, you know, along lines of what San Francisco is doing or San Diego.
Right, anyone else?
All right. It was brought to my attention that during the public comments on this item, that someone was shorting a minute because I allowed a couple of people to speak a little longer. So at this time, I would like to extend that minute. I don't want anyone to feel like they have, were being treated in any way. We want to make sure everyone is treated with respect. So if you can, Anne, will you let Jeremiah have his one minute, please?
Hi, thank you. So if we're going to make this a long term situation for the next two years, public safety is very important. And, you know, I'm over here at the Port of Oakland right now and the only way to make this thing safe for people from cars and Safeway. and Safeway trucks AC Transit buses that are obviously speeding up and down Solano, everybody knows about. These barrels, these barrels and these cones and these plywood is not going to stop a truck or a bus from from hitting people sitting down at a table. So we need to make that those K rails. And also, the the positive thing about the barrels, the rain on top is that we could just drill some holes in the top of the barrel and in the bottom of the barrel and the rain will drill out, wash out. Or we could make some circle sod, some grass, and we could put some some grass on there. And that was about it for that solution. And also, parking is important. We do we do need to have ADA accessible and also I think that was it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. So I had a quick question. I don't know if this is for Jeff or Michelle or Anne. So I know you stated that we've had some commissions review this particular item. Is this item on their work plan as part of something that we approved? And then the work?
I'm not recalling whether it was on the Transportation Commission work plan or not right off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
No, no worries. I just wanted to try to see where we're going to navigate this as far as what we're going to implement long-term. And if we're going to keep it here at the city council, then we need to provide recommendations or at least suggestions on how we move this forward. So that's the only reason why I'm questioning that aspect of it. Vice Mayor Jordan, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'll just reiterate that that I support the processes staff laid out. Councilmembers Tiedemann pointed out, it seems that staff seems to be taking quite ownership of this. So with regard to safety, you know, again, data, lack of data, but I will point out people overrate the effectiveness of curbs relative to the physics of the power of a motor vehicle. So there is a building that has been hit twice. There's another building that's been hit once by a motorist jumping in the curb and smashing into the building with their car. So I don't know that what's out there is any less safe than what we have on the sidewalks already. The building that was hit twice, the owners asked to have barriers put in the entire length of Solano to prevent that from occurring. The council at the time decided not to pursue that. But again, it's not clear to me that these are any less safe than the sidewalks are. People tend to think of curbs as being much more effective at stopping motor vehicles than in fact they actually are.
If I may answer Mayor Gary's question just a moment ago, it is on the Transportation Commission work plan.
All right. So I guess we want to just determine, council, are we are we entertaining this as a long-term? And do we want to take this or give it to transportation and the staff and have them come back and finalize the plan? I'll start with councilmember McQuaid. Your hands up. Go ahead.
No, I think somewhere in the staff report, there's a good summary of how many times it's been to transportation and economic development. I'm I'm not really sure what what more they can do. I think it sort of is our responsibility and I think staff is is working hard on this and I'm I'd like to get something figured out and move this forward one way or the other. So I would I mean, I'm, you know, I'm normally all about public process, but I'm just thinking that maybe the public process at the council level would be sufficient. And I'm sure it'll take us more than one meeting, even when we have all the information to make final decisions. And I would like to recommend that we don't send it back to either transportation or economic development, that the council staff work together on this.
Thank you. Let me go around the room. Councilmember Tiedemann just want to get your thoughts on long-term and whether we should keep it or.
Absolutely. Long-term on keeping it with us or sending it back, I don't have a real strong preference. I think it could work both ways.
Vice Mayor Jordan, go ahead.
Thank you. I think in contemplating the long-term, I think there's value in it going to Transportation Commission and economic development because it raises different aspects of this. For Transportation Commission, these questions of safety, what should be required in terms of the construction of long-term parklets? It's something that that I think will benefit from being considered by that body and the time that it will be able to put into it, expertise that it has. Particularly noting that one of the commissioners is the Transportation Division Director for Berkeley. So he might be able to bring some some experience, knowledge to it that we would not benefit from otherwise. So I'm inclined to go with staff's recommendation on on process. Another item I failed to raise in my earlier comment was regarding parking for people who need to drive. And you know, maybe that, and I don't know if we have a survey, but maybe we want to have a survey of utilization of disabled parking spaces on Solano. Maybe we want to convert more of these spaces that are right at the businesses to disabled parking. If that's, you know, to accommodate people who are in that situation or not necessarily accommodated potentially by the current distribution of parking.
Thank you. And then finally, councilmember Nathan.
Yeah, I'm, I already said, I I think that we should look at the long-term. I kind of lean towards Vice Mayor Jordan's comment about the value of process. If if we were just going to extend these for a year, I'd say let the council do it. But if these are going to become a permanent feature of Albany's commercial districts, then it's more important that we get more input from more people in some of these fairly detailed, you know, water on the top of barrels or, you know, things that are really getting into the the nitty-gritty, I'd rather see that handled in the committees than at the council level. So I I support the staff recommendation on that.
Okay. Do we need to take a vote or anyone else have any? All right. Can I get a motion?
I will move. You want to go ahead?
Go ahead. That's okay. I'll second.
Okay. Well, if I get it right, please feel free to adjust if I don't. So I'll move that city staff pursue the process that is laid out to develop a program that would allow businesses to garner encroachment permits for the long-term. And I'm going to add a couple of things to this that city staff also pursue encroachment or development of an encroachment permit process if it needs to be developed and or pursuing implementation of that process if they think it already exists regarding use of sidewalk space that is on public property. And also consider the suggestion to reduce the street sweeping hours such that they end at 11:00 a.m. on the side streets. And finally, bring back if possible, data regarding utilization of disabled parking spaces in terms of occupancy, which will help us understand whether we need to create more disabled parking spaces.
I'd like to second that, but I'd like to add just one thing, and that is asking the staff to investigate and and discuss as appropriate with the Transportation Commission additional measures for slowing traffic on Solano Avenue. Whether we need more signage, whether we have the option of reducing the speed limit, anything that we can do to to slow people down a little bit more. Thank you.
Before I get a roll, I want I want to ask this as holidays are coming, if somehow we can make it available for our seniors to get their package, those 20 minutes, if we can have that available for the holidays, that would be great. I think someone saying a concierge, that's more liability. We do not need that. So if we can just please just move it aside, let us get through these holidays and we finalize the the outdoor parklets, and I think that will be beneficial to everyone in our city. That's all I want to say. Anyone else?
So just to confirm those two amendments, which I accept, one is for the Transportation Division also consider measures that could reduce motorist speeds or speeds motorists choose to drive on Solano Avenue. The other, and I'm going to frame it slightly differently, but is to seek provision of two 20-minute parking spaces adjacent to the post office or in the nearby vicinity on that side of the block.
City attorney has something to say.
Some of these motions are going above and beyond the agenda description. So I think we need to bring those back for discussion. The agenda description is outdoor dining guidelines, long-term policy. So I that's that's why I wanted to interrupt you while you were making the motion.
Okay, fair enough. So
Go ahead.
If I think of all the bits, I think the bits that don't fit are the motor speed on Solano, the disabled parking, the 20-minute parking. And I think that's it. I think the sidewalk encouragement fits under this because it's outdoor dining. So perhaps we set those other side as sort of general direction to staff, including it in the motion. Does that work?
Yep. You want to get a second?
Second.
Can we get a roll call?
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McQuaid?
Yes.
Councilmember Nathan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
And Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Motion.
Thank you so much, staff, for this, but also can we get that request down for me, please? I appreciate it. I know our residents will too in front of that post office. Because last year it was wrapped around the box and our members of our community were pretty upset about the lack of access to the post office. So that would be so great. All right. Thank you so much for your time. We'll go ahead and move down to line item number 10-3, which is community status satisfaction and racial equity survey request for proposal. I'll turn it over to city manager. Is that you?
Thank you, Mayor. This is follow-up to a couple of staff reports that have come to now on this topic as it grows over time. This is a draft request for proposals for a survey encompassing both the elements of community satisfaction and racial equity. You'll see in the draft request for proposals, there's also an optional element because of the timeline and the uncertainty thereof in whether we may need to utilize voter polling services that could potentially overlap with the engagement with whatever the most competitive consultant is responding to this request for proposals. So you see that optional element included in the RFP with its own cost proposal so that the council will have a clear and vote direct line item should there be an interest in pulling the voters specifically on ballot measures for the upcoming November 22 election. Without all answering any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you so much, city manager. Any questions from the council comments? Councilmember McQuaid, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm a little concerned or confused, I guess, about the timeline as far as doing polling for the election. We haven't really even talked yet about what we're thinking of. Are we too are we too early to do that? Should we? We could put out the RFP, of course, but should we have the actual survey go out a little bit later? What are your thoughts on that?
There would be two completely separate surveys, different groups of people that would be surveyed. A community survey engages much broader spectrum of the community versus registered voters for the voter polling. So again, it's an optional item that the council may wish to select once the council's determined if there are prospective measures for the ballot.
Sorry, I didn't understand that part. Sorry.
Someone else? Okay, I'll go ahead and see if there is any comments from the public. All right. Back to council. Any other questions, concerns? Otherwise, we can move forward. Goodbye, Vice Mayor Jordan.
I just want to thank staff for thinking to add that optional piece. There's any other comment I can make a motion?
No, go ahead. On you.
Okay. I move to approve the issuance of the RFP as proposed and prepared by staff.
Seconded.
All right. Can I get a roll call, please? Councilmember McQuaid?
Yes.
Councilmember Nathan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mayor Gary? And Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we will move down to line item number 12, which is the council subcommittee reports and council member reports will start with councilmember Tiedemann.
I think the main thing is Mayor and I met for the Sogoray Land Trust Subcommittee where we laid out all of our next steps. Met with the Sogoray representatives. It was very productive. We should have some things coming back soon with land acknowledgement, with signage, with how we're going to pay the land tax for Albany. So look for that soon. I think that's pretty much it for me.
All right, let's do councilmember Nathan.
Yeah, I had the my regular meetings of the Alameda County Transportation Commission and its policy committee. I did want to make the council aware of some discussion that has occurred with our supervisor Keith Carson and with the executive director of the ACTC regarding an issue that came up during the ACTC meeting about the student transit pass program and Albany's inability to participate in it. This is a BB-funded, the county-level BB, not Albany BB level funding source that provides lower-income students with free transit passes. And Albany does not qualify because the criteria that were established for it involve that the middle school or high school, which are the the levels that are involved, be within a quarter mile of a transit stop. And neither the high school nor the middle school is within a quarter mile of a transit stop, which is is kind of unfortunate, really, but it it is what it is. It also Albany, one of the criteria is the percentage of students receiving free or reduced-priced student lunches. And Albany is is low on on those measures as well. So we we both supervisor Carson and I expressed some concerns about this. We have heard from the ACTC about what what the measures that ACTC pursues within Albany on safe routes to school and and the fairly robust work that that they have done. But it is an issue that I hope we can take up again before too awfully long and not just in the context of the SOTAC's expenditures, but the variety of ways that we can get people using alternative modes to to get to school. Thank you. Yes.
I would, now schools having basically free breakfast, free lunch for everyone, are they still going to use that criteria?
It, I think that it's, it is, they're the best statistics that they have for who qualifies as opposed to who is, who signs up for it or who who gets it at this time. I don't think that that is going to affect the the criteria that they use for expanding the program.
One of the things I'm hearing in other places is people aren't filling out the forms because they don't have to, so they're not getting. One of the things I'm hearing in other places is people aren't filling out the forms because they don't have to. So they're not getting the data that drives some of these programs.
Yeah, that happens. That happens too.
All right. Thank you so much, Councilmember Nace and Councilmember McQuaid. Go ahead, please.
I attended the world's fastest election board meeting. I think we were there for 10 minutes. I attended two domestic violence remembrances by the Alameda County DA's office, one for children that have been victims of violence and one for victims of domestic violence. League of California East Bay Division met and there was an everyone home leadership board.
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor Jordan?
Thank you. Yes, I attended the stop waste forum meeting and there was an interesting item on PG&E contracting the Energy Council staff, which is one aspect of stop waste as an agency to operate the home energies mandatory home energy score program for three jurisdictions that are interested anywhere in the state. So energy can that was approved. Energy council staff will be reaching out for cities that might be interested in doing that. And it's a little bit of a blast from the past, particularly for those council members that have been on the council for longer. Because our council considered a mandatory home energy score requirement at point of sale that didn't go forward. And at the time, there really wasn't data indicating whether it was of any consequence or not. Since then, with Berkeley having adopted it, I think in 2015 and not insubstantial part of the real estate market adopting this as a voluntary measure across the broader area, there's considerable data now showing that it does results in energy savings. So the information that's provided by this home energy scores is translated to action by new property owners. So that's interesting. So I when we get to future agenda, we talk about that more. In any case, that that policy effort is broadening out.
All right. Thank you so much. I too can be remembering the domestic violence for adults with Councilmember McQuaid. Councilmember McQuaid introduced me to that that remembrance or that ceremony two years ago. And I was grateful that I was able to pull away this time from work to go and attend. It was it was definitely movement. As you may or may not know nationally, over the past year, the domestic violence rate has increased among women. And so we just need to be cognizant of what's going on in our community. And again, it was a very, very sad and very touching memorial to see the lives of people that have lost their lives all in the sake of love, right? So so I encourage you, if you have a time next year to attend, it's it's worth it. All right. With that said, any future agenda items? Also, we're councilmember Tiedemann. Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yeah, so I'll be bringing an item regarding essentially authorizing staff to spend time on developing an existing building electrification pilot program in concert with Energy Council staff. And probably not next time, but the item I just alluded to, making home energy scores mandatory at point of sale. Given that there is now research showing that that is has value. I will probably bring that at some point as well.
All right. Thank you so much, Vice Mayor Jordan. Councilmember Nation? Councilmember McQuaid? All right, we are down to, you know what, I have not been checking the public comments. I apologize. Go ahead and and let the public comment in for one minute, please.
Thank you. Future agenda item. I would just really suggest that future agenda item could be school zones or whichever name the Transportation and Safety Commission has renamed school zones. I think that's a great priority. I think the sooner the better on that. You know, I think maybe with that, the Alameda County bus program might even raise it to half a mile or they might even just waive the quarter mile thing and just say, hey, you got school zones. So yeah, we'll give you free bus passes because you guys are doing some safety around your schools. So I just really suggest school zones, AKA transportation safety streets, something. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, we have line number 14 for announcements and city meetings that are coming up this month. I should cover yourself accordingly. With that said, I would like to thank city staff for the reports that they brought forth and their time to present them to the council so we can review and make decisions that affect our cities. I appreciate their hard work. I would like to thank Vice Mayor Jordan, Councilmember McQuaid, city manager, councilmember Tiedemann, councilmember Nation and city manager for your excellent meeting. And we're out of here at 9:53. So I look forward to seeing your faces again in two weeks. Oh, next week, we have a special meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Gary.
Have a good one.